And now we will begin our regular meeting, which has now been called to order. And roll call.
Councilmember Alvarez is on an excused absence. Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. If you all could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. City Clerk?
I have one speaker card, Eli Rayber.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, pleasure to see you today. It's a very different crowd than when I was here last time. I am here today, and hopefully I have a couple more than two minutes, to thank the city and to thank the San Bruno community. Especially my family would like to thank three heroes: Jeff Benbow of the Building Department, Joel Ansaldo of Ryan &amp; Ryan Construction, and Anthony DeLuzio from DI Build &amp; DeLuzio, Inc. My family bought our home in District 2 nine years ago, and the home hadn't been updated in about 30 years. Eventually, it was time to either move or invest in our home. We love it here, and we decided, rather than move, we want to stay in San Bruno. We participate in the AYSO, the Little League. My children go to the public schools, and we want to be a positive influence in the city. And we tried to do everything by the book. We got the permits, we went with a licensed state contractor, and unfortunately, what was supposed to be a nine-month project has kept my family out of our home for 18 months. The initial contractor we hired, the licensed, demonstrated criminal behavior. And luckily for us, Jeff was the first to notice the poor workmanship and deception and raised the red flag. Jeff, as an inspector, is strict, he's fair, and I hope he won't mind me saying this, he's tremendously kind. After moving on from the original contractor, we had trouble finding a contractor willing to take the work on. And we were nervous what was going to happen next, if anything. And Joel Ansaldo of Ryan &amp; Ryan and Anthony DeLuzio of DeLuzio, Inc. and DI Build stepped up to really save the day. The corrections and engineering effort they undertook was tremendous. The amount of corrective work was shocking. And the Building Department and Public Works have been amazing to work with. The Building Department got our revised plans reviewed and approved so my family could start putting our lives back together. It's been six months of hard work since the changeover, and we're about three weeks from moving home. While I regret some of my past hiring decisions, I am so grateful that we decided to invest in San Bruno, as we have felt the love of the city and the community in return. Our neighbors have been hosting us for dinners, letting my kids play in their backyards, and of course, making use of our great parks. I want to make sure to thank these three heroes and the other city employees that helped us, many of whom I probably don't know helped us, and I probably don't know their names, working behind the scenes. This experience has been financially and emotionally exhausting. I unfortunately lost my job recently partly because of the stress. San Bruno is a great place to live, and we appreciate what the city and community has done for us. We are so pleased with our decision to continue to call San Bruno home, especially knowing that there are people here that support each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, for those comments. I'll ask staff to convey back to those individuals that have been mentioned. I did work with Joel Ansaldo at one point, so he's a little spitfire. So I'm glad you had a great encounter, and we all appreciate, because at times, we don't hear those sides of the story, and what happens and what the staff does to make things operate and have the city continue on, that makes you proud to live here. So thank you for your time, and thank you for bringing that forward. No other speaker cards, we will move on to announcements and presentations. First item, receive presentation on the pre-4th of July safety operations. And we will have two persons that you may know, they go by Chief and Chief, from our Fire and Police, and I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If you can give me just a moment to share my screen, please. Okay, looks like we're ready to go. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Johansson. I am your Chief of Police here in the City of San Bruno, and I am joined this evening by our Fire Chief, Ari Delay, as well. The purpose of this very brief presentation is simply to provide some details about our 4th of July public safety services and enforcement operations in advance of the 4th, not only to inform you in the public, but also in an effort to increase the level of compliance that we get over the 4th. Obviously, the 4th of July can be a difficult holiday for many in the city with the heavy use of fireworks, and so our effort here tonight is to sort of begin the process of hopefully getting as much compliance as possible. So with that, I will kick it over to the Fire Chief, Ari Delay, for some explanation booth operators that lead up to the 4th of July celebration, and to ensure that the safety and compliances are met with those booths. And we have also continued to push out a joint public safety announcement for the public in regards to the safety of fireworks for that day. And if I could get the next slide. Perfect. And then we'll move on to what safe and sane fireworks use and what our guidelines are for the public to ensure that we have a safe and good holiday for the 4th. So for safe and sane fireworks, those are the types of fireworks that are allowed here in the City of San Bruno. They must have a state fire marshal seal. You'll see on the right of the slide that I have before you, the official state fire marshal seal, and it's important to recognize that seal. It's the ones that are safe for us to use for the general public and in our community. We ask that we make sure that fireworks are utilized at least 10 feet away from structures to maintain safety, and don't use it near any flammable grass, trees, or shrubs, or any other debris that could catch fire potentially during the holiday. And we also ask the public keep an extinguisher, a hose, or some other water supply close by, so we can easily suppress a fire if something were to take place that we didn't expect. And then, something of really important note, this has been a problem in the past, not only in our community here in San Bruno, but others, that fireworks are actually not properly disposed of. We recommend putting them in a bucket of water, letting them sit for a few hours, and then putting them in like a metal container to make sure that they don't actually catch fire and start a new fire. There was a home fire last year, the 4th of July, that was directly attributed to the same circumstance, so we don't want to see that happen again. And then the last thing I'll just bring to your attention, the city has sent out a flyer that's been sent out to all residents in San Bruno, just highlighting some of the important information that the chief will review for us tonight, but just know that that went out to all of our city residents. With that, I'll give it to Chief Johansson.
Thanks, Chief Delay. So continuing on, for the police department's add-ons specific to the 4th of July, and I know that I have reported on this to council for many years now, so it's of no surprise, but there has been a robust outreach and communications effort leading up to the 4th to include the flyer that the Fire Chief has just shared with you. We record a joint PSA with Fire that goes out over all of our social media channels, really attempting to gain compliance even before we get to the 4th with the various laws, which I'll go over shortly. We also have pre-4th of July contact with sort of known problem locations, or homes where we have had large unruly gatherings in the past, or where we know we've had significant illegal fireworks usage in the past. And we will do enforcement details similar to the 4th of July, leading up to the 4th of July as well. So we have officers out on an overtime, dedicated basis, in both marked and unmarked police units, even before the 4th of July celebration, in an effort to get out ahead of the problem that we face every year. And then, as I've always reported on as well, all of our staff are ordered to work the 4th of July. My hope is that this simply conveys that the police department takes quite seriously the burden that the 4th of July celebrations can be on many families, especially as it relates to illegal fireworks usage, and we're doing everything that we can in order to mitigate that as best we can. That being said, we are acutely aware of the fact that no amount of enforcement will ever stop illegal fireworks use in the city, and so our effort is simply to stem it as best we can to try to make the holiday enjoyable for all. Some of the things that will be involved in those enforcement details, as I mentioned, are marked and unmarked units, so know that if you're in the public and you have called for help from the police because of a lot of illegal fireworks going off in your neighborhood and you never see a black and white police car show up, does not mean the police did not respond to your incident. The fact is that we'll be out in all kinds of different vehicles, we'll be conducting covert surveillance and doing things that we've learned over the years are more successful in stemming the tide than simply driving around in big, bright, black and white police vehicles and hoping to catch people using illegal fireworks. So there will be a variety of different methods used, we'll be on bikes, we'll be in uniform and in plainclothes, and as we did last year, we'll be utilizing unmanned aircraft systems or drones as well for enforcement this year. Of particular note this year is that between last year's 4th of July holiday and this year's, council expanded our social host ordinance, which is something I am very grateful to council for taking action on. At a high level, what it's important for the community to understand here is that if you are allowing illegal fireworks to be used on your property, and you are responsible for that property, meaning you are the homeowner or the lesssee of a property, you can and very well may receive a $1,000 citation in the mail the day after the 4th of July if you're allowing illegal fireworks to go off in your house or at your house. This is in specific response to the fact that a large volume of our illegal fireworks usage occurs on private property from people's backyards, which is something we can now observe using drones to a large degree. But the enforcement of that violation puts cops in unnecessary harm, puts the public in potential for harm associated with physical arrest, and creates some serious legal limitations. So it's important, again, for the community to understand, this will happen this year if you are allowing illegal fireworks to be used from your home, and you believe they're covert enough that it is not an issue, it is entirely likely you will receive one or more $1,000 citations in the mail in the days following the 4th of July. So please, 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 take responsibility for your own property. In terms of safe and sane fireworks, which is what we want to encourage the safe use of here in San Bruno, they are permitted beginning on the 28th of June from noon to 9:00 p.m., and then on the 4th from noon until 11:00 p.m., so slightly extended hours on the 4th of July themselves. But even safe and sane fireworks have legal limitations. The Fire Chief already talked about where they can and cannot be used, and there's also hours when they can and cannot be used. And you are subject to citation, an expensive citation, in the event that you use outside of those hours or misuse safe and sane fireworks. They must be used on private property only, and at least 10 feet away from any kind of structure. They are not permitted in parks or public parking lots, schools, or any open spaces. So essentially, you need to be on your own property in order to use safe and sane fireworks. And again, misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and also illegal. As far as illegal fireworks enforcement, the key is this fire marshal seal that the Fire Chief already spoke about. If it doesn't have this seal on it, it's illegal. It's very important to know, it doesn't matter where you bought it. We've had many people over the years say, "I bought this at what I thought was a sanctioned fireworks booth," or "at a place where it seemed okay for me to buy these," at a shop somewhere or a store, or "I bought them out of state at a booth." If it doesn't have the California state seal on it, it's illegal. Now, at a more simplistic level, if it flies in the air or it explodes, it's probably illegal. And so, all safe and sane fireworks may have some sparks that emit, you know, 6 to 10 feet in the air, but it doesn't shoot into the air and fly, and it does not explode. If it does, it's probably illegal, and you're subject to receiving a $1,000 citation. We already talked about the social host ordinance, and our ask of the public, as we've said in previous years, is to please only report violations to the police department's non-emergency number when you have real, specific, actionable information about who is using the illegal fireworks. The reason I say this is not because we don't want to be responsive, but it's because we have proven over many years of these enforcement efforts that the most effective effort are our proactive efforts to ferret out the activity. A call of, "There are aerial fireworks going off on my block," over and over again, it's not enforceable by us, and it requires a response that distracts police units from enforcement that may very well result in an actual citation, a correction of behavior. So again, please, we don't want to discourage you from calling the police on the 4th of July, but those calls should only occur if you can pretty well tell us you know exactly who it is that has shot off those fireworks, so that we have something actionable. The majority of the citations we issue, the overwhelming majority, do not come from resident complaints. So we actually do not need the broad complaints. Specific complaints are welcome, but we'll do a better job with our own enforcement efforts. That concludes our presentation. We are certainly available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much to both chiefs. Just for clarity, because this always comes up at times, the $1,000 administrative citation for use, which is much better than the old days, because you had to bring someone to the station, do the process, which kept folks from enforcing and trying to be out there on patrol. But with that said, many people will say, "Well, why don't you just increase it to 2,000, 5,000?" But based, I'm just asking for if my statement is correct, is that $1,000 is the maximum that the City of San Bruno can impose upon anybody for this administrative citation. We do not have the authority here at this level to increase it anymore.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We are set at the allowable threshold for that fine amount.
I was here, because I've been here a little bit, but we did once have it at 500, which then council took it to 1,000 when it was a very bad fire season. But, okay, just wanted for that clarity for the public. Questions or comments from colleagues? No? Okay. Then, thank you both for your presentation, and appreciate all your efforts that you'll be putting into next week or so, along with Public Works and other departments that are all community services, et cetera. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item B, receive update on the Recreation and Aquatic Center project.
I'm Travis Carlin. I'm the Community Services Director. Tonight, I will be presenting an update on the progress of the rack and our opening procedures for the rack. Tonight, I'll be covering a few items. I'll be talking a little bit about the progress and schedule, facility operations, and what to expect moving forward. I'll give an overview of the membership and facility use, our rentals and events, the programs that you'll be expecting at the rack, and then a little bit of information on our grand opening. Tomorrow, I've been told that we are expecting to receive our temporary certificate of occupancy. So that's great news. That's a step in the right direction. This will allow staff to occupy the building and begin preparations to allow for public use. The staff will be learning the building during this time, performing trainings, practicing opening and closing procedures, and procuring materials and smaller equipment for operations. All of our office furniture has been installed at this point, so all the offices are ready to go. During the TCO period, we will be having our fitness equipment set up, and we'll be unpacking all the other furniture after it's been delivered to the facility. As of today, fire testing has been completed, and recently, the Beckner Shelter road paving has also been completed. The elevator inspection can take up to two weeks from the request date, and the official request was submitted last week on June 18th. Our front desk operations will officially be moving from Fireman's Hall to the rack on Tuesday, July 2nd, and during that time, we will be opening the lobby for Parks and Recreation business at the facility. We will begin membership sales and facility rental requests on Tuesday, July 8th, and all memberships purchased prior to the opening will have a start date of the soft opening date of July 24th. We are also planning for a grand opening and dedication to take place on Saturday, August So what's to expect? The period from July 24th to August 23rd will be referred to as our soft opening period. We will be operating from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. We'll also be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. We will be maximizing the indoor pools based on staff resources and demand. If the outdoor pools are completed during this time, we will also incorporate outdoor pool use into the schedule. We are planning on running one session of swimming lessons before school starts, and we will continue swimming lessons through the fall. This will be announced on the website as well as all social media, once we verify all the dates. The program will be available on a first-come, first-served basis. And finally, the gym and walking track will be available for use. After our grand opening and dedication event on August 24th, the hours will be expanded to our full operational hours. We will maximize pool usage based on demand, which will vary during the school year and summer months. We also plan to maximize our programs of facility rentals within the facility. This slide gives you an overview of the membership and facility use options. There are also opportunities for both residents and non-residents to pay a daily fee for use. The full facility membership for ages 14 and up includes all of the fitness center, track, gymnasium, and pools. The membership is $30 a month for the first resident in the household, and any additional of the household over the age of 14 can be added for $25 a month. There's also an initiation fee for this option, and membership will be billed monthly. They also have the opportunity to pay for a full year in advance, and they would not incur the initiation fee. For those that are under the age of 14, we have punch pass options. This option does not include the use of the fitness area, however. Seniors 50-plus have an option to getting the full facility membership, or they have the option for the punch pass as well. And with both of those options for seniors, they'd have full use of the membership areas. And last, we offer a punch pass option for those 14-plus. This option includes the full use of the membership areas. One thing I'd like to point out is that we are going to be offering fitness orientations, and those will be required for 14- and 15-year-olds that want to use the facility without parents there with them. As of July 8th, we will also be accepting rental applications for rentals in the facility to start in August. We expect the majority of our rentals to be held in the traditional rental areas, however, the gymnasium and pool are also available upon request. Caterers will have the opportunity to apply for an approved caterer, or to be an approved caterer. Any caterer that will be using the facility will pay an orientation fee of $65 and attend an orientation to be an approved caterer. And once they're on their list, they are on our list. Then, moving forward, we will provide drop-in programs in all areas of the facility. Generally, drop-in programs will require a membership, punch pass, or a daily pass to attend. We're also entertaining the idea of having child watch hours, which would be a time where folks could drop their kids off in our children's area to be watched while they're using the facility, either working out or using the pool. Additionally, during the soft opening period, we'll be moving some of our recreation programs and classes that are already in play into the facility from other locations. We anticipate that we'll be offering at least one session of swimming lessons before the kids go to school, and as mentioned, we'll be continuing those through the fall, and then we'll be posting those in all the places like our social media, on our website, so that folks know when that is going to happen. And then, our grand opening is slated for August 24th. We're already planning for that date. The event will start out with activities, food trucks, and entertainment, and then followed by the dedication ceremony and ribbon cutting from approximately 1:00 p.m. until 2:30 p.m. And then we'll follow up with facility tours, activities, and additional entertainment outdoors until about 4:30. Staff are also exploring the idea of an evening event that would be more formal in our community room, and we're still talking about what that could look like, either being a fundraising event, or something to thank the players in making this project a reality. And with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Well, you did that quite succinct and with conviction, and you put dates to it. So that's a lot of excitement. Couple, a question and a comment. You talked about approved catering services, which I think is appropriate and ideal. What about for cleanup? Are we doing that internally, or also are we going through the process, as they do here at the senior center, for those cleaning services that applicants can choose from?
Sure. So we are entering into a janitorial contract, and the additional cleanup will be required of rentals, just like it is here at the senior center.
And then, just food for thought, not a discussion at this point, but getting a call from a trustee from the Community College District, and they were talking about the lack of the Skyline facility. We've heard that before, as far as amenities that you have to go to CSM or Cignotta for. Don't know if there's opportunity to partner with that, because obviously, there are subsidized elements. This is something for a future discussion, but I wanted to bring that up. There may be some interest, and if we have the availability or usage, maybe that will help both sides.
Yes, we've heard that as well, so we're ready for those conversations.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Medina?
Yes. Thank you very much. Very exciting news. Occupancy, wow, that's an amazing word. So I'm thrilled to hear it. The question I had, for residents and non-residents, so the membership fee of $30 a month, that's open for San Bruno residents, or who is it open up for?
Sure. So the membership fees that I gave tonight are all resident fees. We do have a non-resident fee as well, and those are already on our website for folks to look at. They're higher. They are higher.
Is it 20% higher, is it generally, or can they have a membership if you're not a San Bruno resident?
They can have a membership, but it is higher.
Right. And then, we're going to throttle that, depending on if, how many outside non-residents are actually members. I mean, we want this to be for our community first, but open to have others that are going to apply. Okay, that's, I'll look that up, but I think it's $36 maybe a month?
It's approximately that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Just a comment. I don't recall, in at least my tenure here, of spontaneous applause during a staff report. So that shows the excitement. I'm just so thrilled to get to this point, and just thankful for you and your team, and for the whole city team on getting us to this point. Thank you.
Nick is hoping for the applause after his report, too, though.
You have a hard, you have a bar to hit now, Nick, sorry.
Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up, because as I was driving up here, I looked, and there are people parked in the parking lot, so the parking lots are, the one parking lot's open now, and if nobody's been down to the City Parkway, it is, it's really starting to really shine. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and make sure that people do know that there's places to park. Do not double park while unloading your picnic supplies. Do what the lions do and all other responsible people do. Park in the parking lot, get your beach cart, load up all your picnic supplies, and walk it over, and be safe. So no double parking on City Parkway. Thank you.
Okay. With that, then, Travis, I can, Community Service Director, I can say that, being here when this facility, the senior center, was, had its groundbreaking, had its ribbon cutting, and being on staff, and what it takes to open a facility is daunting. And it's not just you, it's the whole city staff, the team, and everybody in the departments. And at this facility, this center, is still is known as a gem in the peninsula. But it also doesn't have a couple pools and a basketball gym, so there's a lot, it doesn't have an elevator. There's a lot of other elements that go into this. So I believe, as we dedicate that facility, it will also be a gem in the peninsula. And I want to thank you, Public Works, each and every department that has been involved, from the inspections in the Fire Department. It has taken a team effort, and you came in on this. Wasn't like you were here from the very beginning. So I want to thank you for, and everybody, for Matt and Ari, and every department that has had anything to do, thank you. For we see a light at the end of the tunnel, and the date is coming upon us. So thank you. Is there any public comments for any of the items?
I have no speaker cards.
All right. Next, we'll move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment, period, for all items on this section unless a council member has requested for a separate vote. I know that items H and I, Councilmember Hamilton has some comments. Also, he's notified me that E, he is recusing himself, so when we have council action, please keep that in mind, that E is recused for Councilmember Hamilton. keep that in mind, that E is recused for Councilmember Hamilton. Is there any other items? Yes, Mr. Medina?
Mr. Mayor, Measure G, or Item G?
I was going to say, we're going back in time. Okay, thank you. All right. If there are none others, there's nothing for a separate vote. I'm going to kind of summarize this one a little bit. Consider adoption of a resolution approving the design of the 2122 Street Reconstruction Project, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract, approving material testing agreement with Ms. Everie, approving a construction contingency, transferring the budget in the amount of $1,072,000, appropriating $200,000 from the 2425 SB1 funds, appropriating funds from the City of Milbrey, appropri, yeah, and the City of Milbrey, it just threw me for a minute, because I know they have a meeting going on now, right now, in the amount of $126,500, approving a total project budget in the amount of, and determining the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Medina, Mayor Medina. It's hard to say that name sometimes. I'm pulling this, as I often do, just to acknowledge the amount of work that we are seeing getting done in San Bruno. Our residents have been telling us they want their streets paved. Our San Bruno Public Works Department tells us they love paving, and when we give them funds, they can get things done. So I want to acknowledge all of that work of $4.5 million for this round. I also want to acknowledge the cooperation from the City of Milbrey to work with us and to pave a street on Santa Elena Avenue that is right there. One side of the street is Milbrey, the other side of the street is San Bruno. So it's an example of how we can work together. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of that work, and when we give Public Works the money, they'll pave more. So we're seeing that happen, so I wanted to thank staff for that.
Anything else from colleagues? Let's move on to Item H. Consider adoption of a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2425 funded by SB1. Councilmember Hamilton?
So my comments are very similar to what happened for G, since that was also about paving. I just wanted to highlight the important projects that are going to be taken care of in this year, using SB1 funds, including, we've gotten a lot of feedback about Poplar Avenue, so that's going, it's going to get paved, because we're, as Councilmember Medina said, if we give Public Works the funds, they will go and pave because they love paving. So I just wanted, for anyone who's interested, the streets that are part of this are listed in the staff report. I won't go through the list, but there's several of the streets that people have been contacting us about for quite a long time, so that's really, really exciting. I do have one question, and that is about the, when we had our paving presentation, we mentioned, there was mention that we were going to have a dedicated page on the website to give people updates on paving, and I just wanted to get a timeline on when that is going to be completed. And I do know I sent that question in advance, and the answers came back, but I've been in meetings since that happened, so I haven't had a chance to read it. So if you already sent it to me, I apologize.
Mr. Lee?
Through the mayor, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. So the website, we've been working very diligently on it, trying to make it more interactive than a typical website, so people can kind of look around there and see all the work that we are doing, and have an avenue so that the community can see the progress that we're generally doing without having to come to council meetings. So we've been working really diligently. I believe that in July 2024, we're going to unveil the website to the public, and we'll send a message out when that does happen to our social media.
Great.
Thank you. I'm really excited for this, and it's going to be, as you said, it's going to be a great extra tool to get this important information out, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Councilmember Medina?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to thank Director Lee for talking to me about one project in specific at Bay Shore, because it's one of those really odd streets across the street from the Tanfran. One side is the east side, and the other side is west side, although it's north, I'm sorry, North Bay Shore, one goes east, one goes west. And so for the longest time, it's been incredibly difficult for vehicles to park there and drive through it, and often the residents are parking on the sidewalk to keep from getting their cars hit. And so my question and observation is, you really get one chance to do a street right. And if you have a chance to repave a street with full reconstruction, you want to do that and do that right. So I wasn't sure if this design is going to be able to do anything to alleviate the turning radius of the vehicles as they're passing along on the street that, the side that they're doing this time, the westbound side. And so I wanted to hear if, at some point, it's a really, it's, for people that don't know, it used to be a rail spur that led to Tanfran back in the day, and right now, it's pretty much, I believe the property is owned by BART. In the years past, the council has looked into potentially obtaining that property to make it look a lot better, and the city has recently, through the South Line project, obtained community benefits for that project. And I wanted to, it's hard to bring up when you're going to start a project in our process up here on the council, but when a project is looking to get paved, the street's getting ready to pave, I think it's really important that we think through, are we going to pave the street and come back and do something to it later? And in that area, it's, it really, something needs to happen. So I wanted to find out from our director of his thoughts on that, and at what point would the council be able to weigh in more on a project that's more significant? But if we were going to go ahead and pave it, it's going to, it's kind of hard to say, well, now we're going to change it in a couple of years, or whatever it's going to be. So I appreciate that Director Lee, speaking with me about that today, but I want to be able to bring this to the council, and at some point, when's the appropriate time to have that discussion? Because there might be some council members up here that are familiar a little bit about the site, but this is something I think that requires a little bit more discussion and input from the council. I really appreciate that we're going to pave it, because it does need to get paved. I drove that street this past weekend, and there's nothing but puddles after puddles after puddles, and you have to swerve. And fortunately, it's a very low U street. There's very few people that drive through it, but when they do, it's really hard to get through. And I know a number of years ago, we were looking at the fire department having some difficulty getting around in those areas. So when would be the right time to reconfigure that street?
City manager or Public Works Director?
Through the, through the mayor, Matt Lee, again, Public Works Director. So the SB1 funds is the Road and Repair Accountability Act of 2017. So I believe those funds, we'll have to look into it, are only to repair failed roads, not to reconfigure roads. Currently, the project itself is to repair those failed roads. I think the question that Councilmember Medina is asking is, when would we look at reconfiguring the roads? Currently, there's no project for us to reconfigure the roads at the moment. There's no CIP for us to look at that. And so from an engineering standpoint for Public Works, our purpose is to implement and repair the roads. If there is a approved CIP for us to look at with the appropriate funding, we would do so.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, if I can just echo a bit what Director Lee just mentioned, you know, we bring the CIP process, you know, late winter, early spring, and that really is when, if you don't see a project there, that's when the project should be introduced, you know, put on the radar so that we can sort of figure out what needs to occur next. So again, suggesting that perhaps if this is of interest to the council, we can certainly tee it up for our next CIP project, or CIP cycle.
Sure. I just wanted to maybe have a little bit, a better understanding of, so currently, it's the westbound lane. There is using the existing curb line on both sides, and a lot of that curb and sidewalk's pretty busted up. So generally, what we do, our practice has been, to replace whatever failed sections of curb there are. But there is no plans, understandably, because there's no project. I just wanted to be able to bring this up, because it's kind of late in the game, right? Because we haven't had a real, like, infrastructure discussion about, you know, looking ahead of what needs to happen in our neighborhoods, because there's probably other areas that need it as well, just that there's too many things that we need to do, and we don't have enough funds. But it seems like on this point, it was like, well, we need to pave it. And so it's difficult to, I'm all in support of paving the street. It's just that I wish there was a way, a project, where we would be able to say, yeah, we should widen the street. And by widening the street, I believe we could widen the street by going on the empty parcel that's in the middle. And from my, from remembering what's in Public Works, that your street generally doesn't end at the curb, it generally goes for a couple more feet for the alignment of a street from the city right away. So that's pretty much my concern in how we're going to have this talk, whether it's next year, because we're only doing one side of the road. So something needs to happen in that neighborhood, and it seems like the funding available with having the community benefits from South Line, which is right next to it, would benefit that community. And so community benefits, it seems like perhaps we'll be able to look at, but I know we broke down and went down to only have five council initiatives this year. So it's an interesting situation to be in. I'm glad for the paving, it's just that perhaps we can have another discussion about this soon. And maybe we could have a subcommittee that could look into these things, because there used to be a subcommittee that would look at what was getting paved, and maybe we could catch that a little earlier than, before the night, the night we're approving a project for construction. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, my memory is that in 2017, SB1 was designated to, when those monies came in, it was like, okay. I had a concern, it was like, we need to start putting resources toward the failed streets, because the thing that we always would tell the community, well, you know, it doesn't, that money doesn't go far. So that's why it was designated for the SB1, which Director Lee is right, as far as what it is implied for. It's not the widening of the road. Also, my understanding, if memory's right, is back when it was looked into, and it is BART property, they did clean the weeds. I'd ask them, because I wanted it done before the Fourth of July, but that there might be an issue of contaminants and other elements, that it wouldn't be as simplistic as, do we really want to inherit it, as is? But, but thank you for your comments. Were there anything else from colleagues on H?
If I can just clarify a piece, so, Mr. Mayor, so I understand SB1 funds are for the repavement and reconstruction. So that unit cost is one light item. For something else to do the expansion, that would require funds from another source, and that, so you could do both. It's just that right now, SB1 is set up, as you said, just for the reconstruction, not for any design or improvements to the width of the road. I just want to make sure that there are two different things here, and what I'm asking is that in the future, that we can find a way of combining those two and get a better project.
Yeah, no, I heard you in just like the, putting it on CIP, so we get that on paper and keep it before all councils. Yes. You're welcome. Anything else on H? Let's move to I. Consider adoption of a resolution approving the design of the winter storm hazard mitigation project in Crestmore Canyon. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you. I just, I don't have any questions about it, I just wanted to just to pull this for comment and to highlight for the public, this important work that is needed to make permanent fixes for issues that came up during our recent winter storms. You know, in the past, there's, we've not been, in some cases, have not been as proactive about these types of projects, and that has led to some very, very expensive repairs. So I'm just really glad to see that we're jumping on these things when they, when they occur and taking care of them during the, during the next dry season, when we can do this type of work and prevent much more expensive and dangerous problems from happening in the future. So I just wanted to thank staff for this work and just highlight it, because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues on this? Are there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for action, and please, within the motion, acknowledging that Councilmember Hamilton would be recused from Item E. Any action from the body? I'll go ahead and move approval of consent with Item E, being noted that Mr. Hamilton is recusing himself and is not voting on that. There's a motion on the floors, or second?
Second.
Motion made by Medina, seconded by Medina. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it, passed unanimously. Let's move on to public hearings. We've all been waiting for this.
Item A, hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 to '25 Capital Improvement Program Budget, and consider approving a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2024 to '25 budget, a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2024 to '25 appropriations limit of $55,305,709, a resolution adopting the City of San Bruno's financial policies for investments, fund balances, award of contracts, and debt management, and a resolution amending the fiscal year amended/adopted 2023 to '24 budget.
Thank you very much. First, we will go to our city manager, and then I think we're going to have the CFO up after that. Yeah, and we'll clap after, so don't worry, Nick. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Really proud that we are sitting here before you tonight with our budget fully baked, and this has taken really eight months of work on the staff part, on the council's part, on the community's part, to be invested in getting, you know, getting us here today. It is a balanced budget. It is a budget which is funding your important services. It is a budget that anticipates certain economic hiccups in the future, but we are, I think we are starting, heading towards a stabilizing future for us, and very excited for this team to be able to present it to the council for final consideration. As you know, there's a bunch, there's a number of enabling resolutions that are attached that are also very important. I do want to thank CFO Nick Pegaros and his team for what truly has been a Herculean effort to get it here today for you, for your consideration. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the CFO and let him make his presentation, and of course, the council and the community certainly have an opportunity to talk more about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, and good evening, council. My name is Nick Pegaros. I'm the city's chief financial officer, and it's my pleasure this evening to present two items. First is the Capital Improvement Program public hearing, and then secondarily, the fiscal year '24-'25 budget adoption resolutions. So our objective this evening is clearly to have the Capital Improvement public hearing, and then adopt the enabling resolutions. As the city manager highlighted, this has been a journey for the past many months, and we're at the last step here in June. We've had a series of public meetings that really started in earnest towards the beginning of February with the council retreat. The council gave very good foundational direction, policy direction, for staff to move forward with the budget development. The CIP that we're discussing tonight has been presented to the council a couple of times. The most recent last city council meeting on the 11th, there wasn't a significant emphasis placed on it. However, the Capital Improvement Program budget has been substantially in the form that it's in, that it's in today since, since March. since March. So I won't go into tremendous detail on the capital improvement program budget. But I do want to highlight that what is in the, in the, in the draft city council adopted budget summary, that's up for consideration next, is a capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 25 totaling $142 million. The revenue for the capital improvement program comes substantially from grants for non-general fund or non-utility related programs. And then clearly for the utility, utility related programs, the revenues come through, come through transfers and, and, and other sources. The expenditures are comprised of two major components. The first are carryovers, estimated carryovers. These are project appropriations city council has taken previous action on specifically for this upcoming fiscal year. City council had previously authorized a number of projects. The outstanding project balances for those projects stands at an estimated $97 million. Those funds will carry over into the new fiscal year. In addition to those carryover unspent funds, we will be adding, the, the budget recommends adding just about $45 million of new projects. There is a standout in the crowd of that $45 million, which is in water capital, and that's for a tank replacement. So as you see across multiple funds, we have a total of $142 million in CIP appropriations recommended for fiscal year 25. The, the bulk of those are in our three, or in our two utilities, water and wastewater. And then the next largest is our, is our street program, which was discussed earlier. So I'll move on to the enabling resolutions. The first action is to adopt the fiscal year 25, fiscal year 24, 25 budget, which is comprised of both the operating and capital improvement program budget. This item has changed to incorporate several items since our last discussion on June 11. We have made some corrections that were identified as part of our reconciliation through the, through the budget process that are now included. We've also updated the capital, capital project carryovers. We had initially incorporated an estimate that was based on March activity, but we have updated those to the end of May. So it's more accurate. And then finally, new this year, we have included estimated purchase order carryovers. These typically have come to the council in the January, February timeframe frame for you to take action. However, we believe that including the purchase order carryovers in the adopted budget provides a more transparent view of the city's financial commitments for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, we have a total budget which changed from our last of, from our last presentation due to the items listed above of $292 million. And there are 281 full-time equivalent personnel. The next item for the council consideration is establishing the fiscal year 25 appropriations limit. The appropriations limit goes back to the late 70s, is approved by the, by the voters, as approved by the voters, and makes an effort at limiting the amount of tax dollars a city can collect and spend, hence the appropriations limit. That amount changes annually based on changes in population growth as well as change in cost of living. For fiscal year 25, our budget is $10.7 million below the limit adopted by, below the, below the calculated limit set by the formula required for the limit calculation. Our limit calculation or our limit is 55.3 million and 40, we're only 44.6 million of our revenue is subject to the limit. So that is, is, is healthy, healthy news. The next item is the city council, we're recommending city council take an annual action of adopting our financial policies. There are four financial policies we're seeking your adoption of this evening. These have all previously been adopted by the city council and we have gone, we have reviewed them and identified opportunities for improvement, clarification, and, and reaffirmation. First on the, is the investment policy. We are requesting that the city council increase the max, the minimum, I'm sorry, the maximum allocation that we can make to money market funds. Money market funds are, are liquid funds that, that are currently, and, and our investment opportunities are currently earning the highest yield. And we are regularly maxing, hitting the max on the, under the current policy and our ability to, to use, to deposit funds in those, in those types of accounts. So we are requesting an increase in the allocation maximum there. On the fund balance policy, we are asking the council to update the fund listing. The fund listing is changing, or the funds that are, that the city maintains are, is changing. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund, we are recommending as part of the next item that I'll present, which is the year-end budget amendment. We are recommending that we close the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for efficiency, for reporting requirements and efficiencies, as well as we are recommending that we add all of the new impact fee funds that were, that were established this year in recognition of development agreement and development impact fees that have been paid. On their award of contract policy, we are requesting and recommending that the council approve a, an exemption to the contract requirement for professional and contract services that total less than $15,000. Oftentimes, we're finding that with some of these smaller contracts, which have very limited scopes of work, that it can take longer to process the contract than the work actually takes to complete. And so this would, this is identified as an efficiency opportunity. And then finally, debt management policy, we reviewed the current debt management policy with bond council, and they have no recommend substantive recommended changes. There are a couple of updates that are included in the, in the policy. And I think probably the most significant is my title. And then finally, in the slew of, of actions this evening, we are requesting that the council authorize a year-end budget amendment. The year-end budget amendment has a, a number of items intended to clean up the books that, on several items. The first and most significant is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. There's a great deal of work involved in reporting both to the, to the Department of Treasury on the city's use of the American Rescue Plan Act Funds or ARPA funds. We are required to report quarterly all funds that we've spent, and we have been doing that diligently. And then after, every year at the end of the fiscal year, we are required to go through an audit of our expenditures under the ARPA, under the ARPA fund. We have reviewed with our independent auditor, a proposed journal entry that would, that would move all of the funds related to risk to the ARPA allocation to the city. That would move all of this, all of funds and show them expended in this current fiscal year. There are a number of items that go with that, such as capital projects that were previously funded, or that were funded by ARPA funds. Having those funds go back to ARPA and then have one-time revenue fund those, fund those projects. The impact to the general fund is net zero. However, we are required to take a number of accounting transactions to show the money as spent. And I'm pleased that our auditor has signed off on the journal entry. So if you approve that this evening, we will, we will complete our audit and our quarterly reporting to the Treasury effective June 30 of, of this year. The, the year-end amendment also moves money between our general funds with respect to our reserves. And this brings our reserves into alignment with the fund balance policy that the council adopted early this current fiscal year. I think it was October. Also, there are some transfers required from our restricted revenue funds to establish the new community development revenue fund, specifically the general plan, the general plan maintenance fee and the technology maintenance fee, which are recorded in a separate fund to, to prevent commingling with the general fund. However, now that the community development function has a special revenue fund, we can now account for those in, in that fund. And then finally, there are a number of deficit fund, cash deficits in funds, nothing anywhere near what we had discussed several months ago. But we would like to end the year with a, with a, with clean books and, and then go from, go from there in the new year. So that concludes my presentation. As city manager did mention, this project would not be possible without a number of individuals. And those, these are just a few who have worked diligently over the last several months. And then finally, again, our recommendation is to hold the public hearing on the CIP and then finally adopt the resolutions that I presented. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, the report and the information. Are there any questions from colleagues on the presentation itself at this time? This is a public hearing. So let's make sure we have opened the public hearing and see if there are any speaker cards in regards.
I have no, no speaker cards.
With that being the case, if we close the public hearing, that will be the last opportunity. So with that, we'll bring it, seeing no one, action?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion, Salazar, second, and Hamilton, to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Now we'll bring it back to the council for comments, additional, well, questions, et cetera. Are there any at this time? Seeing none?
Oh, I'm just waiting. Sorry. I was just.
Is there anybody wish to talk?
Oh, yes.
Okay, well.
I was waiting. I was, you know.
Councilmember Medina.
I'm not in a hurry to get out of here. I thought we were going to be here, you know, till 11. But just kidding. So yeah, I, I sent a number of questions. And I met with our CFO, Nick Pegaros, as I mentioned during our last council meeting, and that was really helpful. And I wanted to acknowledge all the time that this took. It's a really big deal. And if the, the last round of questions, the, the answers are in, on the, on the website. And I'm not going to go through, through all of them because they were answered sufficiently. And I wanted to express my appreciation for them. It's, it's true. You learn something every day, if you're lucky, you know, and I appreciate that. I think what it comes down to is, is as we're entering this budget, and we're, we're going to approve it tonight, and I, and I support, support it, and I will be voting to support it. But I have some questions that were not answered. And, and that these weren't sent to our CFO. I was hoping that, that our city manager was going to answer it. And the first part of it is, is the whole point of our parking meter program, our enforcement program, and, and how that, that is working and, and how, to better understand where all the money is coming from. And, and in the past, at different meetings, I've mentioned that I'm, I have the belief that any excess money from the program should be reinvested in, to the downtown area. And when we first talked about that, we were saying, well, you know, we're going to deal with that in, we'll, we'll deal with that in budget, right? Because that's the appropriate time we're talking about the money. And so this is the time to talk about it. And so I still am not clear on the transaction fees. It's something that we've been talking about and staff's looking into. So there's a number of different fees, depending on whether you put coins in, whether you use your credit card at the kiosk, or whether you use the, it's not, it's not a real app, but it's a online system that you could pay. And so we've, we've saw some progress in the reduction of the time intervals. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to understand what the transaction fee. So then we can understand the program, how it works more. So that's one thing. The other thing is how this parking fund is paying for itself. The parking fund was generated, and there's expenses for the physical kiosks. And then there's, there's funding required for expenses for the enforcement. And then on the revenue side, it's, it's the amount of money that's being collected through the meters, through the, through the parking permits that are issued. And then it doesn't include citations. And so if we're establishing a parking fund, it is established, where do the, where does the funds from a citation that's issued in the downtown for parking? Currently, it's my understanding, it doesn't go into the parking fund. It goes into the general fund. And so my feeling on that is that's, that's not appropriate. I, I think I need to be convinced why that should be happening. And that's why I'm bringing it up. If we have a contract for the enforcement, and there's a fund, then the money generated from the enforcement should pay for the enforcement. So it's kind of an awkward way that I, I don't think is appropriate. But I'm willing to, I want to learn more about how that should really work. Because the contractor that we hired to do the enforcement is doing more than just the parking enforcement downtown. They're, they're also doing the stormwater, street sweeping enforcement. And so that time should be charged to the stormwater side. And then revenue connected from that, that should stay on the stormwater side. So I think if I have a question, made my questions clear enough, it's that if I can get, if it could be explained to me why we're doing it the way we are, and why we're not taking funds and appropriately, I shouldn't use that word, why we're not charging our time to one of the two accounts, whether it's stormwater or it's, it's parking for the enforcement side. And then how the, the citations that are generated by that enforcement side should come into the appropriate side that it was collected for, whether it's street sweeping, or whether it's going into, to parking. And it's my understanding, the citation side is not. So that's, that's my main question. And then the whole point about where should the money go? You know, we could, we could have that discussion too, because we haven't had that discussion as a council of any, if any remaining funds will be generated. But it seems like there will be, but that could always change based on the budget.
Correct. Let me, let me start. And then I'm going to have the CFO and maybe even the police chief weigh in. So Councilmember Medina, I'm hearing three distinct questions all related to the downtown parking program. One is the parking transaction fees. How do they work and whatnot? And one of the things I think I explained to, I think, all of you is the fees are highly complicated. And it really differs depending on, on, on the process used to, to, to pay for your parking, as you rightfully pointed out. We actually gave up on actually trying to track this because the matrix got too complicated. There, there's just a lot of fees in charge, depending on what bank card you use, whether you use the app, as you said, not the app, but the, the online tool, or whether or not you're paying and whatnot. So we can, we can recreate this for you and put it back out to you in a digest item on Friday. I'm happy to do this. It will be incomplete, but it'll probably give you a flavor of how complicated this is. That's number one. I'm going to make sure the CFO can chime in if I get something wrong here. Number two, how does the parking fund work? What are the mechanics of it? As I'm, what I'm hearing is what goes into it, what, excuse me, what goes into it and what gets paid out of it? I might let our CFO explain that and/or our police chief for the moment. And then that, the, the enforcement of the different, the different kinds of parking enforcement that occur through LAAS, through our third-party enforcement group. And I can probably have the CFO explain why we do it a certain way. I want to remind the council, we are not yet even three months through this process still. And a lot of this, we talked about when, when you said go on April, or for us to start on April 1st, we had a lot of our own questions to ask and answer. So we were, we were moving forward. were, we were moving forward. I, I think there is, it is, it, it remains city policy that the, excuse me, it remains council policy that the, the, the funds collected into the parking fund, and any surplus that may be collected, the question has not, has not been addressed with regards to should that money be reinvested in the downtown. I think one of the comments I could make to you anecdotally is, we are investing a lot of money into the downtown, whether or not it's from the parking fund. In fact, we're investing a lot of general fund money into the downtown. As you know, we've partnered with the foundation for them to also help us invest in the downtown. So, you know, the money is, can be fungible. We can show this transactionally to you, sort of through an accounting process, to help you better understand what kinds of investments we are making. I will hazard a guess, and I am gonna probably regret saying this publicly, but I hazard a guess, we are, we well over invest, we are investing far more money than we're taking in from the parking fund right now, and into our downtown. But with that, Nick, are you comfortable answering?
Sure.
Thank you.
Through to Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Medina. I, I do want to just highlight a couple of items that the city manager talked about. First is that, you know, he's, he has been very, he's been very patient with me, and I thank you for your patience. Focusing on the budget has clearly been a very time-consuming process, and the, the mechanics and the outcome of the parking fund is, is on the list of projects for finance to return to the city manager with, particularly, as he mentioned, relative to the fees. And, you know, back of the, just a very high-level overview, there, the transaction fees are literally all over the map, in terms of which card, which card is used for a transaction. So there is a, there are several to-do items on my list to, to return to the city manager with. But I think the most important piece of all of this is that we have, the, the fund is not even a year old, and, and so it's very, working through...
Go ahead.
You know, having the conversation of if there is surplus money, what do we do with it? We don't know what the surplus money is just yet. We don't know what the full financial picture of the parking fund, parking activities, enforcement, citations, and all of those. We don't have a full actual picture yet. We have lots of estimates that were, that were generated over the past 12 months or so, but, but we don't have, have actuals. And so, as, as the city manager did mention, money that is collected in parking revenue, parking, paid parking revenue, does get deposited into the parking fund. The enforcement and the repayment of the, of the loan to the city, to the general fund is, is charged to the parking fee, or to the parking fund. The citations, as was mentioned in the memo that we sent to council today in response to questions, the citations are commingled with all of our citations. You know, I, I don't know, without having seen the data, without having had the chance to work with the police chief on analyzing the data, the ability to bifurcate, to seg, to segregate the various citation revenues, specifically to the point that you, that you raised, Councilmember, about the stormwater, or the, you know, the, the street cleaning and the stormwater fund. I do, you know, I, so with all that, I guess my, my closing note here is that there's a lot more work required on the finance side in order to answer the questions that you have, and we are, that is on our list, and we understand the priority, and the city manager has, has requested that, so we're working on it. I, I don't quite have a timeframe for you, but, but our hope is this summer.
Police Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think that they've covered anything I would cover, with the exception of potentially one thing, which is discussing the idea of bifurcating citations by, essentially by violation or by activity. Not only are all of the citations those, meaning those that are authored by LAS contractors, as well as those that are authored by community service officers and police officers, all commingled into the same system, which would make that difficult, but attempting to ascertain what specific violations relate only to LAS-issued citations for timed-based parking enforcement, meaning the metering program, would be all but impossible within that system. And it's also important to note that they're not, LAS is not simply doing street sweeping enforcement and timed parking enforcement, meaning paid parking downtown. They're conducting, as is a key component of the initiative, citywide enhanced parking enforcement, which will continue to expand to be less and less downtown, and more and more citywide, as the paid parking program settles in and becomes more normal behavior for folks downtown. So, the idea of bifurcating out the citations is extremely problematic on that front. Additionally, very problematic to ascertain what is actual revenue from those citations. So there are all sorts of fees associated with generating citations and collecting those citation dollar amounts beyond the cost of LAS contracting. There's fees associated with processing those through TurboData, there's fees associated with collecting on those, there are sometimes court fees when there are appeals made, there are differing fee amounts that actually get paid based upon those appeals, and then there are allocations we pay to the county and the state for citations, which are not based upon a percentage of each individual citation. And so, to sort of piggyback on what the chief finance, finance officer has said, we would need to break down all of those if we wanna begin moving those monies around, because to simply say, we wanna take all citations issued downtown, and the dollar amount of those citations, and move them in the parking fund, well, those citations have a number of costs associated with them, that would then also need to be moved to the parking fund, which are not currently being paid out of the parking fund, but are be, being paid through other general fund accounts. So, I, I think that anything is possible, but please do understand that the ask here is extremely complex, and quite a heavy lift, that will take a significant amount of staff resources and time, and, and likely not result in a super-clean picture for you of what dollars are being generated where, so they can be moved around.
No, I, I appreciate the answers. I understand it is complex, and I'm very patient. I'm not gonna hold this up to be able to, you know, I've heard our CFO mention that he's working on it, and we're gonna get some progress. I, I'm not in, in, I'm not up here trying to create more work, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that, that we can explain to the public a little bit better on, on how this all works, because the council has a certain limited capacity of understanding with, based on the data that we have right now. So, understandably, the parking permit, parking enforcement is achieving turnover in our downtown. I see it all the time. So, I'm willing to, to, to wait for some of those answers, and bring those in offline discussions with the city manager when they come up. So, I, that's the questions I have currently about, for the budget side, to understand, in creating a budget, you're estimating, right? So it's a 30% of that number would come to the city, and I thought I recall hearing at some point, that it was like in the low 20% of a parking citation is generally what the city gets. They don't get the full amount. It was some number in that amount, that I heard a couple of years ago, probably, I just can't remember exactly when it was, but, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to ask the questions, and thank you, staff, for providing the answers. I look forward to talking about this some more.
Anything else, Councilmember Medina, at this time?
Yeah, because, this is, yeah, you'll, well, it's because this is the time when we get to talk about the budget, right? Because it's all about waiting for the budget, to talk about when we decide what our priorities are. And in San Bruno, our priorities are, first and foremost, the safety of our residents, with 53% of our general fund expenditure being in fire and police. We have to have safe community. And so, when else are we gonna be able to have these discussions? And the, at our previous meeting, it was kinda like staff is going through their presentations, and it's like, okay, this is what they, this is what staff is planning to do, this is a, and will the council accept it? And I've accepted it. I look forward to voting yes on the budget. These additional questions that I have, and I'm just gonna start going through a couple of other ones, are, you know, how much does the city budget for community events? Whether it's the Posey Parade, Christmas tree lighting, Community Day, music in the park, it would be not, we've never done this before. What is that amount? What are, what, what are we willing to, as a council, spend on our community for the fun things, right? And I asked that question, I got a couple of answers on it, but it would be nice to see that on a, like a line item, or highlighted somewhere, this is, so the public understands, it's $100,000, $150,000, $200,000, whatever it is, all these things cost money. So, some clarity on that would be appreciated. And I guess the last thing really is, of just, I have to admit that, you know, when, when we were looking at getting these development impact fees, you know, it was sounding like it could be Christmas in San Bruno, right? Like, wow, we're gonna be able to get this money, we could do these other things that we would love to have for our residents. And it just winds up being, like, every year, things get more and more expensive, and as we find out, like, that money isn't extending further out than we all wish it would. And so, with some of the monies that are in those community benefit buckets, development impact fees, it's kinda like, okay, of, of the money that's there, what could we use for the things that we want to improve our city? How, how to improve our city? Because we have the budget from staff. Manager provides the budget, we accept it, amend it, and we have to get, we have to get a budget approved by the end of the month, right, before the fiscal year begins. And so, I had a couple of things, and, and I was hoping that, man, maybe we'll be able to do a few more of these things. And one of the things that was in the budget previously was replacing of streetlights, the streetlight poles, because we've, we've known that we have about 400 poles that we need to replace. And last year, we replaced, I think, 31, and then upon finding out from staff, we're not planning to replace any, there's no streetlight pole replacement plan for this year. And it's like, well, if we don't look at replacing those that are already, we know need to be replaced, we're just kicking that can down the road. And so, can we use any additional funds from community benefits for, for, for that? And I did get the answer that, well, it's not budgeted. So, I'm asking for that. The couple of other things that I asked about was, you know, increasing the budget from the additional funding sources for traffic calming, for speed humps, for, for pavement marking, for the addition of additional, for additional big-belly garbage cans. I know we're talking about downtown again, but those cans work. They don't overflow, and the other cans that are on the street, they're nice, but when it comes around to Saturday and Sunday, they're overflowing. And because we know that nobody's servicing the cans on the weekends, so wouldn't it be a good investment to get a couple more of those cans? I know they're expensive, but they reduce the labor that it takes, and they reduce the amount of trash that blows around downtown. And, and the last thing I brought up was, was the potential use of installing more remote cameras, or motion lighting and signage in the areas that we know constantly are getting dumped, down on 7th Avenue, down at Lyons Field, a couple of properties on Mastick, a couple of properties up the hill. There are no consequences for people who are dumping in San Bruno. It's too hard to catch them. And I just feel we should try something, because it's gonna continue going on. And at some point, it just continues adding to the operations of Recology. Who's going out there and picking it up? Well, that comes back to our ratepayers. So, I know in the past, we've had some cameras, and probably over the years, they probably just stopped working. I remember, maybe about eight years ago, we had some, and I don't know if any of them are working anymore, but just, what can we do with this additional funding that's currently one-time money, community benefits? And how could we do a few things on a smaller scale to improve things a little bit? Just make it a little bit better. You know, the, the streetlights and the solar streetlights, two different things. I know we've had an RO outage, and we, staff's working on that, but at some point, you know, you can drive around different parts of town, and it, it's really, really dark in some streets, right? Because these, this town was designed back in the day when that was kinda what people did. And it's like, well, what could we do to put more streetlights up, these solar streetlights? And we did one at one point. I remember Councilman Salazar supported the effort to put one on between 5th and 6th Avenue, and when it was dark, people would dump, and other things would happen in the dark, right? Because you'd get away with it, you're not being seen. And after we installed that light, and was probably six years ago, five years ago now, and I, and I spoke to the resident there, and they said, yeah, it really, really improved, just one streetlight. So, I don't know when we could ever talk about, you know, what else we can do, other than we could do it on budget, because we don't have strategic initiatives. We put them a lot on pause, right? So when are we gonna have this discussion? So, this is why I'm bringing all these up now. I don't know how we're gonna go forward with it, you know, talk about this another time, but we have a budget that's in front of us, that we know we need to approve, but I wanted to share that with my colleagues here. I would, I would guess, everyone has a few ideas, you know, and when are we gonna have those discussions about those ideas, and how much it's gonna cost? So, it seems like this is the right time to have that discussion.
Any comments from staff, or? Yeah, if I can. City Manager? Mr. Mayor, thank you. One of our goals this year was to bring the budget back virtually every single month to the council, right? We, we, we talked about some of the preliminary information, there was agreements on the goals, there was agreements on the CIP, tentative agreements, I want to be clear, because the council can always change its mind, and you are fully within your right to do so. And with due respect, Mr. Medina, I, I think two weeks ago, we made the full presentation, we had the full conversation. I made comments to the extent of, hey, if you wanna change anything, it would be great to hear it two weeks ago, so we could be ready tonight with those kinds of changes. We didn't hear anything, and I think I even said, okay, so we're bringing this back as is. And my earlier comment tonight was, this thing's fully baked, we're good to go, if you're good to go. I understand there's a lot of questions. If I can be so direct, I think this, your questions are to your colleagues at this point. I have presented my, my budget to the council, and now it's a matter of, do you all want to amend the budget, as it's been presented, to, to pay for, you know, a number of these things? I think we did answer a lot of the questions on why perhaps they weren't originally put into the budget, or why we had some staff concerns about these, and I think council has the answers to all these questions that, that we posted today. We can come back to these through any process, any budget amendment process, if that's the council's desire to, we can do it tonight, or we can do it in two weeks, or we can do it during mid-year. I think the question is, does the council want to invest in more big bellies? I'm not trying to minimize the question. It's, it's a $7,500 purchase. How many more do we want? Where should the money come from? We do still need to balance the budget at the end, and you can pull it from, from reserves, as the council's right to do so. I think it's to your colleagues, is where the question is now. It's not necessarily to staff, because like I said, two weeks ago, we gave you our budget and said, here it is, any thoughts, any reactions? And generally, the reaction from the dais was, it's good to go. At least that's my takeaway. So, Mr. Mayor, that's, that would be my response on behalf of staff. So, Mr. Mayor, that's, that would be my response on behalf of staff.
Thank you, City Manager.
So that, I, I totally respect that, right? So we're gonna get through the budget tonight. When, if, if there's no interest in having the discussion, that's fine, too, you know? That's, I understand, I've been on a four-to-one vote before, so it's understood. So I just want to hear what my colleagues have to say about it. I mean, do you guys have any ideas of something you wish that was in the budget? I don't know.
I'll go first. So of course I do, absolutely. But I think there were a few things that were set out, that we were gonna have five initiatives, we all agreed to that. And yet, things do come back to say, well, let's form this, and let's do this. So, and I think we're working on those five initiatives, and I think we're making progress. And I think that's why we said five, and that's what the city manager said, hey, if you're gonna add one, please remove one. I think it's the same with the budget at this point, which I understand you're talking about going forward, is that if you start modifying the budget, then, let's say we add $100,000 for X, then where's that $100,000 coming from? Unless it's one-time reserves. And we do use one-time reserves, whereas there are, as we know, for some fees that we waive for various community events. Those have come from one-time reserves. We're gonna have situations where I believe is all in the budget, with the fireworks, right? We're now at a 7% cap, which means that's going to come from the community for the safe and sane fireworks. So as, as you remember, and know, that there's always a quarter amendment. We, we review it quarterly, we can amend things, we can suggest things, and try to work on it at, at that time. I think that's also, it's one-time stuff, which it sounds like you're referencing is like a one-time. And do they raise to the level, and maybe we need to say, what rises to the level to use one-time funds? Like you said, okay, we want three or four more big belly trashcans. Is that warranted? Do we go out, we were talking about special events, you have concerts in the park. Yeah, there's staff time, but usually they get sponsors for that. So maybe that nullifies some of those overhead costs. As I made mention at last time, I'd like to see when the Recreation Aquatic Center, that we do have more community events. That's why I went to the South San Francisco Pride event, and I went to the Milbrae Juneteenth, was to see different avenues and different elements and how they do it. Bringing it back and trying to understand, too, that we want to involve the community. A lot of culture and diversity, I'd like to see next year, something that brings all of us together. This has been a tough year in a lot of cases. And I'd like to see that as a community, but that takes resources and time. So I'm also knowing that I think what you're saying is, I'm not talking about the budget that we have before us, I'm talking about when do we get together again, or when can we offer those things? And that's my suggestion, is there's an amendment process that happens quarterly. Maybe that's too soon in one quarter. I think the city manager maybe mentioned it's mid-year, where you're really evaluating and seeing what we have. We also don't know, I mean, the VLF is still kind of up in the air, but we may have had some better news. We don't know about the economy, people have different predictions to it. So I think we need to be mindful of all of those elements. And maybe that didn't even answer your question, I'm sorry, but, you know, of course I do. And I have other, other thoughts, too. But I want to be mindful of us, what we agreed to as a council, to try to get those avenues. I think we have the on-hold column, if my memory is correct, it's like 13 items, that they're on hold due to lack of resources, staffing ability at this time. So right there, there's 13 just hanging there. Now, if we want to keep adding more to that, then I, we're going back to that same adage of, let's have 40 things, and we're not seeing ourselves achieving in it, because we're going in too many directions. But that's just a little bit of my feedback. I don't know if Councilmember Hamilton or the Vice Mayor have any comments of their own since, at this time. Councilmember Hamilton.
So as far as my understanding of when would we bring these types of things for this, for adopting into the budget, I have to be frank, it was before tonight, in my, in my view. The, as the, the city manager said, these were, these are things honestly that I think should have been brought in the meeting two weeks ago, so that we, if we ask for X, Y, or Z, staff would be able to say, well, that's gonna cost this much. So then we can then have a, have a reasonable discussion about, you know, do we want to try to include it in the budget, and where would we get, get that money from? Now, with that said, that doesn't necessarily mean that, well, okay, well, now we missed our shot, and we have to wait for a whole year. I don't want to do that either. I think it would be reasonable to, you know, if we can, you know, maybe we can do it, do it through our one-on-ones or whatever, but set up, set up a, agendize for a future meeting, these types of things, so that we can do it in a, in a, in a budget amendment going forward, rather than try to jam it in tonight. So that's, that's, that's my thought on it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Chair, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, this has been a long process. One of the slides we saw tonight kind of showed the, the whole genesis of the, of the discussions that we had. In general, I support a lot of the things that you're talking about, especially the infrastructure things. I made arguments to prioritize the, the light poles, the RO circuits, those have always been important. But, you know, I think when we did agree, you know, we're all in agreement here that we had to pick a limited number of things. The ones that we did pick, I think, have huge, they have budgetary and, and strategic importance. And that's why we, we sort of leaned on those, to get us in, in a position where hopefully by the time we start the process again next year, we'll be in a better position to fund more of these things. We have about a billion dollars in unfunded infrastructure things, including some of the things that you mentioned. And so it's, they are, they're on the radar, and I'd, I'd like to, you know, bring those forward as well. But, you know, I agree with what, what the mayor and Councilmember Hamilton are saying, that, you know, we, we, we need to look at the ones that are, that rise to the level of strategic initiatives, and those, I think we're gonna have to agree, we'll have to wait till next January to discuss, which, you know, which ones we prioritize, because there's a lot of them that we could discuss. And then there's some other smaller ones that you mentioned, that I think we probably could have some discussion during the year about, you know, you know, if we're seeing, you know, we get our first quarterly update, if there are extra funds, we can decide, you know, which program we might want to invest in, if, you know, they're small enough where we could do that with a, with a small investment, you know, mid-year. So there are some opportunities. So, yeah, I don't think, you know, we, we completely shut the door on some of the smaller ones, and, you know, I'd be open to having those discussions as they pop up. But I really think we need to let this budget have a chance to sort of sink in, let's, let's see how it plays out, let's see how the economy treats us, and then, then we can come back and revisit some of those.
And then I was just like the ROs you had mentioned, and I think, you know, the crime, the safety, that's critical to the community. We know when those lights go out, people don't feel safe. And I think folks want to see monies being invested as well. They want to feel that they have a safe community. And streetlights really matter a lot, and that's a very complex situation, but one that we're gonna keep addressing until we address it. And so there, there are a lot of things, I think, that we all kind of share on some of these avenues. Councilmember Medina?
Right. And just the fact that we're talking about it, right? Because we don't get a chance to have more free discussions about different ideas, right? So I understand, at this point, going forward, we have a budget. Now, I'll question, though, that the streetlight pole replacement was in the budget. So it was a mistake. But that was the budget that was provided. So we should replace some streetlight poles. They're $15,000 each. They're only gonna get more expensive. It was in the budget. Where could we, where could we get from which reserve or impact fee? Because it's kind of, they're kind of the same now. We're using those terms the same. And then there's community benefits money. Community benefit money could be used on anything. So, you know, just, just, I acknowledge, I should, I could have brought these things up, fine. I own it. The streetlight pole replacement was in the budget. We should do something. We're not, we're, you know, we spent 407,000 last year. You know, we should probably put at least that amount going forward. And it's, and if we wanted to do it, which fund could we get it out of? That's the question, then. It's not, it's not something new.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Medina, I did not mean to be chatting when, when you were talking. Staff is very confused about the claim that the streetlight replacement was in the budget. It was not in the budget that we presented to you, to my knowledge. And, and I think we're scratching our heads, thinking, I, I don't want, I don't want to be wrong on this, but if you know of something that, that, between my Public Works Director, my ACM, and then my CFO, we're all scratching our heads, saying, I don't think that was in the budget.
Okay, just from the presentation, it was, it was shown that how many were planned for 2025, and I believe it was 31 poles. So in, in, I could find the page.
Oh, it's the, in the metrics. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, 31 poles listed there, right?
Okay.
Yeah. And mistakes happen, I get it, right?
No, 31 poles listed, unfortunately, no money's funded. No money's proposed, sorry. I take that back.
Is there a fund source available that could be pulled out?
So through the chair, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. I think what is being referenced is, for the draft version, the metrics of streetlight poles to be replaced, those goals were actually supposed to be accomplishments for '24. Because we had a pole replacement project two CIPs ago that were completed. We'll make that correction in the, in the sheet. I know that there were comments on it in the past, and so that, that correction will be moved to accomplishments. So I think for goals, again, if we're looking at projects and things that are funded as a project, it, we should be focusing in the part of the budget that are CIP projects, that have approved CIP numbers.
So through, yeah, through, through the mayor, I'm just looking at the, the recommended budget that we've been looking at for the last month or more. And on page 118, under Performance and Workload Measures, it has number of streetlight poles replaced, it has the 22 actual, 23 actual, and the 25 goal is 40, as listed. But so, but you're saying that there was no, there's no money on the money, on the, on the money side from the Public Works budget to do those 40? Okay.
Staff nodded yes.
Okay. Do we have any sense of what that mon, that number would be for 40 poles? And I know it's not gonna be, you know, 10 bucks.
Sorry, I don't, I don't have that number in front of us right now. So those 40 poles, again, that's a number that should also be addressed. We'll, we'll make sure it changes. The number, depending on, on the RO streetlight project, may change based on the timelines of that, because those also count as poles, if you're replacing RO streetlights, right? And so it's, they're, they're, they're different. I mean, they're one metric for all streetlight poles, but we're replacing poles for various reasons, right?
Right.
If we go through the RO streetlight project, we would be replacing those poles, but I believe what Councilmember Medina is talking about is just the traditional streetlight pole replacement to aid our infrastructure. And so I believe the funding that we had previously, I believe is from two budget cycles ago. That, that funding source, I believe, was a one-time source, but we can check into that as well.
Yeah, that's fine, we could come back and talk about, just that it takes a lot of effort to agendize something, so this is the time. I'm, I'm, I understand, I appreciate all the comments, I accept it. You know, it's tight with the money that we have. And at some point, those streetlights need to get replaced, the storm drains need to get replaced, the, the paving has to get redone, and we have to do our best. And when we have the available money, and whichever fund it is, if it's one-time money, we have to be even probably more careful with that, because that money's gone, it's not coming back. So I'm happy to bring this forward again. I think it was a healthy discussion. So, thank you.
Other questions, comments, and back to council at this time? In general, on, on the whole budget? There's nothing at this point? Vice Mayor?
I'll just make one, one comment to, it is, it's been interesting, and we've had so many finance directors in, in my time on the dais, and every, everyone brings something different. And it, in a lot of cases, it's, it's been, you know, positive improvement and getting things better, more transparency in how we, how we report things. And in some cases, it's, you know, it's been steady state, and we see no changes. But I think this year, having a new city manager, a new CFO, we, we did uncover a lot of things that were eye-opening to me, even being on the dais for so many years, things I didn't realize we were doing. I do think we are making some very positive progress on how we're controlling things, how we're managing things. I think this whole budget process, from the very beginning, the agreement that we would limit our focus and make the best use of our staff time, was, was a great decision, and I really like the way things are going. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved in developing this, and I'm looking forward to a successful, a successful year. Thank you.
Any action from council? If council wishes to move forward, this action can be taken in one motion, as read by the city clerk.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion Medina, second and Salazar, to approve item A, as read by the city clerk, with all resolutions. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Hold on. We didn't want to leave you out. And CFO, if you could please, on behalf, I'm sure I speak for the council, on behalf of the council, go back and thank the team that did this, it was, it's a lot of work. And I understand, I think the Vice Mayor said it very well. I think what I also appreciate is that we're having realistic numbers. It's not just, here's, it's gonna be 150,000. We're trying to be realistic in the actual cost to the best of your ability, so that we're mindful and we don't have to go back and say, well, how do we go from here to here? So I think that's important. So I know you've worked for the city before, I'm not gonna ask you, did you like the council better then or now? But we appreciate you being here, and thank you to the team for the budget. With that, we will move on to item eight, Council Committee Reportouts. Are there any at this ti, uh, Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I ju, I just wanted to make sure, because last time, I gotta just raise my hand more often. I just want to let everybody know that I attended the Association of Bay Area Government Meeting on June 21st, as the alternate representative over in the Oakland Museum of California. It was my first time over there, I took BART. It was actually a pretty good ride, you know? If you haven't ridden BART in a while, give it a shot. I'm happy to report that the budget was approved, and we're going forward with continuing being a member of ABAQ, so it's all good.
For me, similar, this month is big on budget for all of our organizations. So on the ALS JPA, which is for the San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Board, that also, our budget was approved, and the allocation plan for '24, '25 was approved. And we are dealing with, the employees that are there have to be put under CalPERS, so we're having to go through that process, so they're not with the Daily City. Commute.org had an in-person meeting, and the budget is approved, and they're continuing on that. If there's no other at this time, we will move on to comments from council members. Mr. Hamilton, Councilmember Hamilton? Mr. Hamilton, Councilmember Hamilton.
So, tomorrow is the annual food distribution at Bel Air Elementary. So, the, always looking for volunteers. If you'd like to volunteer to help, please be at Bel Air by around 1:45 PM. And then, of course, if you're, if you are in a food insecure situation, you can be signed up on the spot. So, please do come out. The process starts at 2:00, but the line starts earlier than that. So, I want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And then on this coming Saturday, at the American Legion, is our monthly pancake breakfast. So that'll be happening this coming Saturday at 8:30 and going until about 11:00 or until the food runs out.
Councilmember Medina. I have a few things. Talking to the city clerk, it is to bring them up here and not send them in. So, real quick, just going back, since the meeting went late last time, I had attended the cappuccino graduation. Also, was honored enough to be asked to go to the Plumbers Steamfitters Local 467, which they held it at Skyline College, a graduation for the apprenticeship program, which is a five-year program. So that was exciting. Tended the coffee with a cop, and Councilmember Medina was there at One Love Cafe. I already mentioned how I had attended the South San Francisco event in the Millbrae. Also, Sam Trans is looking for Citizen Advisory Committee members. It is a volunteer position. They meet in San Carlos monthly, and they review all of the materials for Sam Trans' board of directors, give their input from residents and their liaisons. So they're always looking for that. And so you can go to the Sam Trans online and apply. There are vacancies. And, what was one of the thing? Tended a, a little bit ago, a third-grade town hall meeting at Allen Elementary School with the sheriff and representatives from the school board. They were, again, some interesting and tough questions from the students, but appreciated being there. And just as a positive note, Sam Trans is currently at 98.7% of pre-pandemic levels of ridership. So, even though other agencies are struggling, the BART, the Caltrain, Sam Trans serves a community that needs these, this transportation, and they continue to offer programs. But it's exceptional, and I think we all know that the Bill of 1031, which Caltrain and Sam Trans oppose unless amended, was pulled at this time. It doesn't mean it won't come back. And basically, it was to try to have 27 agencies gone into one through raising tax measures like payroll or sales. And there was really no other funding source available, but that has been pulled back. Lastly, I want to just give an update on Portola Elementary, the incident that happened up there with the tear gas situation. So, as I spoke last time, there was a meeting with President of the Board, Jennifer Blanco, who organized the meeting, myself, Sandy Alvarez, and the fire chief. And so, basically, we recapped, to get back to the incident. So, I have talked to the county supervisor, Vice President Canepa, and to community development. And where the San Francisco jail resides is not in the city of San Bruno's authority or boundary. It is unincorporated San Mateo County. So therefore, when we had people saying, pass an ordinance, well, that would go up to our border, but it would not go into the jail. The Health Department from the county is still doing the investigation. The San Francisco Sheriff is still doing the investigation, anticipated maybe in one to two weeks. That should be completed. Vice President Canepa of the Board of Supervisors, along with Supervisor Pine, are exploring the issue and what authority they may have, working with county council and potential legal options. And on the communication side, what we did is we took that meeting and we went beyond that. So, it has been suspended. The four of us all agree that it should not come back. That training should not come back. And it made me think back to a letter that I wrote to Sheriff Hennessy back, way back then. Got criticized from somebody who lives in District Two. And it was, when I read in the Chronicle, when the mayor then wanted to close Bryant Jail and bring those 300 persons into the San Francisco jail that is next to San Bruno. It is not the San Bruno jail. And I wrote a letter that was like, the communication isn't great. Javon was there. He helped me with the letter. Was criticized that it was, I was being too firm, too strong. But I think it's important. It's important that, you know, they need to be good neighbors. And I think in this case, the current sheriff has owned it, as I said before, is working collaboratively. And so, I appreciate that. But what we went forward with is, so what happens now? Let's say there is a breakout. In the old days, there would be the old reverse 911 call. You'd get it, and they would, but how many of us have landlines? So, what is their process? What is their mechanism? So, the fire chief, after our meeting, talked to the sheriff, gave him some metrics and processes, so that it's clearly defined, not only for the schools, but for the community, for Skyline College, for Church of the Highlands, about what is the process? If all of a sudden, community members see 12 ambulances rushing toward the jail, should there be a notification, yes or no? What deems that? And what will be the mechanisms? So that is what we are working with now from this end, because I think going forward, we just need to ensure that the community is notified in a timely fashion of situations that do arise. And we're not talking about everything. They have a lockdown inside the jail because there was a situation. We're not talking about that. But just, I think this gives an opportunity going forward to ensure that our community feels that they're getting response, have an ability to get answers. So, I just wanted to give my colleagues an update on the Portola. Is there anything else? I am looking at the clock. I see 9:00. I want to thank staff for the budget. It's done. Congratulations. I want to thank staff for working, as I said earlier, on the Recreation Aquatic Center. I also want to, I was with somebody who, we talked about the San Bruno Police Department. It's not to pick on them tonight, but to have them out. But, you know, in this community, I think we've been very fortunate. We don't have vacancies. We're not having to offer incentives to have officers here. We're fully staffed, where others, if you want to go to San Mateo or San Francisco sheriffs, they have 100-plus vacancies in each agency. People are having to offer signing bonuses to try to get folks in. I think it's due to the morale of the department, the leadership of the department, the wellness program, and that they matter. And I think the council supports our police department. I know I do. And I want to thank that because, thank them because that came up. And that doesn't say all, every other department doesn't deserve those accolades. But that is one thing, when I speak to other colleagues in this county, or what I do on other boards, that is one thing that is highlighted, that in our public safety, we don't have vacancies. But in our police department, which has been extremely challenging over the years in light of everything, that our department stands strong, and in the budget is something that was unique. Actually, putting money aside, because we're going to have retirements, so we have good succession planning, and we keep all of those positions filled. That is something that I have not seen since sitting up here. So I want to compliment and thank the department. I want to thank the chief. And, but I also want to thank all the staff for all of your efforts, your work, and your time. And so with that, the next regular city council meeting will be held on July 9, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Everyone, please have a safe, enjoyable Fourth of July, and please watch out for each other and your neighbors. Meeting adjourned.